It's fine.
It's fine.
It is. We just were trying to settle things down.
You had other things going on?
Um, the graphic is... Pause that slightly. But I think we need to go over that here and not worry about the...
Yep. It's okay, Matt. Okay. Time is 6:01. We are going to call the speaking order, beginning with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're going to sleep. That's awesome.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you for that.
I will second said motion.
Oh, is... do we know everybody on the phone or anything?
No one on the phone.
We have a call and we're good to go. Roll call.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Champion.
Yes.
Director Dorder. Director Eastman.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director Pivich. Director Smithson.
Yes.
Motion carried by 02.
Thank you. That brings us to 3.01 at this time. Any member of the audience may address the board with comments about items of interest or concern. Citizens wishing to address the board during public comment must complete a public input form located in the back corner of their room in its entirety prior to speaking at the podium. Please state your name and please limit your comments to three minutes. Iowa law prohibits discussing specific employees or their job performance. We do caution those making public statements that what they say could violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy. And if they're unsure of the legal effects of their remarks, they should seek independent legal advice prior to their comments. Great. Moving on. Board Chair of Communications, 3.02, Director Vich. Let's start with you, sir.
The main thing that I have to report is that I was in Des Moines on Tuesday for the ISB LRC community meeting. I'll have more to say about that when we get to the agenda item 5.0... 8.
Perfect. Thanks, sir. Director Champion.
I don't have anything to...
I feel like I should say, "As seen on TV," Director. Director Smithson.
I do not have anything.
Thank you. Director Castro.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. I have nothing other than the fact that kudos to the baseball players. I've been attending a lot of baseball games here recently and I'm thoroughly impressed with all of the players and their coaches. And the new field is beautiful. So, when it's dry. Sorry.
Is everything dry right now?
Everything except for the bat service block. That brings us to 3.03. Our superintendent's... Yes. Our superintendent's report. Dr. Morris.
I think I have the world's shortest suits report tonight. I know you're all excited. It's summer. I hope our families and staff are enjoying some well-deserved time off. Just a reminder to those of you in the audience and those who are listening, please continue to share with our Director of Communications your summer adventures. We love seeing all the fun that you're having during break. And so, thank you to those that have already shared pictures of sea turtles and, I don't know, all kinds of things that have been out there. But please continue to share those. And I want to thank our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and our elementary teachers who have been in the district office over these past couple weeks. They're starting to dig into our new CKLA English Language Arts curriculum for elementary, starting to build the scope and sequence, really digging in, getting ready to help us prepare for training at the start of the school year. So, I appreciate the time they're giving up on their summer breaks to come in and help Jamie lift this work so that we're ready to go to have a successful implementation of it. And that is it tonight.
Thank you. Brings us to 3.04, BEA. Maybe we might be here tonight. Moving right along. 3.05.
She's in Europe.
She's in Europe.
Yes.
Moving right along. 3.06.
No students today.
We'll keep the trend going. 3.07. Richard, take it away.
Now, that's my cue. Well, we've got a number of students who went to Washington, DC as part of the National History Day National Contest. And they all did quite well. Hadley Apple, Addison Bloofel, and Caitlin Stiles-Pena placed second overall nationally in the junior group exhibit category. Kaylee Husser and Gabriel Wiseman placed eighth overall in the same category. Lucy Wolf placed in the top 20 in the junior individual documentary. And Ishika Matwani placed in the top 30 in the same category. Jackson Neber placed in the top 20 in the junior individual exhibit category. Stephen Schwartz placed in the top 30 in the junior individual website category. And Truman Brooks placed in the top 50 in the junior historical paper category. I do believe this was the biggest group that Bednorf has sent to Nationals in the history of National History Day. Kudos to all.
So impressive. Thank you very much for that. 3.08. Turn it over to my...
Congratulations to the Bednorf High School's debate team at Nationals. They had finishes at the MSDA National Tournament with the following results. Ava Holmes was the two-time presenting officer and the semifinalist in the summit. Heath Leon was an octafinalist in storytelling. And Max Randtilla was a four-time qualifier and double octafinalist in impromptu. Congratulations to all of them. Well done.
Thank you very much. Brings us to 4.01. Our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Champion.
Yes.
Director Dorder. Director Eastman.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director Pivich. Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Motion carried by 02.
Thank you. That brings us to 5.01. Our facility use policy and rates.
Okay. Like, our Director of Operations is correct to come up. We... He has kind of now... Actually, he's now leading this work and overseeing our facility use process and rentals.
We do have an action for this, right?
Oh, yes, we do.
Do I have a motion?
That's okay.
I move to approve the BCSC Facility Use Handbook and Fee Schedule as presented.
And a second.
I second it.
Okay. Coming back to you. Sorry, Dr. Morris.
And so, part of what we do annually is reflect on are the fees we're charging, helping us cover the costs and the wear and tear to the facility. And then Kurt also has some recommendations in the handbook. And so, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Sure. Very minor handbook changes. Just included some language of some legalese in a couple spots, added some information about signage that renters could put up in the building and what the terms of that were. And then got rid of some parts of the policy that we weren't really enforcing. For instance, there was a piece in the policy that said, "No for-profit organization may rent the facilities." Well, we do that every weekend in the pack. So, probably just thought I'd drop that as a policy if we're not really following it. So, adjusted the fees. I reached out. The last time the fees had been up there was about three or four years ago. And I think we all understand we're paying more for things nowadays. And so, probably ought to reflect that within our fees. I adjusted some of them based on the size of the space. For instance, the highest rental fee for any single space is the middle school gym, largest space we have in the district. I thought that made sense. And then everything else kind of tears down off of that. So, any questions on any of that?
Just not a question, just an observation. In the past, we had some facility usage by groups that really weren't paying to use the facility. And hopefully, anybody that rents our facility, no matter what position they are in district, will pay the fees. Because that wasn't done in the past. And I think you will do a good job in taking care of that.
We try to. The non-for-profits do have the option of what we call reciprocal agreement. So, if they do not want to pay for any usage fees, custodial fees, et cetera, they can work essentially for us. So, for instance, there's a local church who's going to use part of our building for their BBS summer school. They were interested in doing a reciprocal agreement. So, they'll be cleaning the bleachers after the PB Bednorf basketball game. So, that would greatly help my staff and offset some of those costs. So, we do get creative with certain groups if they're willing. Sometimes they're not willing, and that's fine. They'll pay for what they do.
I want to sort of follow up on that, actually. I know that groups like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, other groups have been in Group A. And what this will mean is that they would be in Group B, or they could choose to make some sort of reciprocal agreement, like a troop project.
No, we still classify them as Group A because they're a non-for-profit, and it is a service to our kids, if you will.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
They would possibly get a charge like Girl Scout Daddy Daughter Dance that was on a Saturday night that maybe required a custodian to be there. We do pass that cost along to them.
And that's made clear. All Group A's don't have any... They don't have rental fees, but they have any additional costs. So, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Good. Roll call.
Director Dorder. Director Eastman.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director Pivich. Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Champion.
Yes.
Motion carried by 02.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director. Brings us 5.02, Grant Wood Building Action Plan Presentation.
So, we have... You have had the opportunity to hear from our building leaders over the past few board meetings. We continue that trend this evening. That is quite the hologram dog. I can attest, it did not look that way when I reviewed the presentation. But it's kind of unique. So, maybe this should be an idea for our new... I will leave it there, but I got laughter in the audience tonight. So, come on. Here with us tonight is Jill Bresnan, Principal at Grant Wood Elementary. And I see our amazing instructional coach, Heather Hyatt, who supports the work at Grant Wood as well, who is here probably to help in support during the presentation.
Moral support.
Moral support. You're not going to present tonight? Oh, Heather, you're missing out.
You're taking over your questions.
I'll help you present.
Jill, it's all yours. Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Thank you.
And that did print just...
Just beautifully.
Okay. First, I just want to thank the board, Dr. Morris, other directors. This being my first year at Grant Wood, it's been just amazing the amount of support that I feel from all of you. So, first and foremost, I wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity to lead Grant Wood and then supporting me so well throughout this journey. So, we'll get into the Grant Wood Action Plan. And we want to be really mindful at Grant Wood that we're always connecting back to our strategic plan. So, tonight, we're going to make some definite connections to district priorities, learning and achievement for all, and student accessibility and supports. So, we'll kick off with our literacy goal. Again, that is rooted in Priority Two, learning and achievement for all, but it is specifically rooted in preparing all staff members to support and challenge all students. So, at Grant Wood, our goal for literacy was for students to be... To increase their proficiency from 67% to 80%. And we're using the A-Reading Test, the Fast Screner, or the measurement tool. So, here's a snapshot of our data, K5. In the fall, 67% of our students were proficient. And then we jumped up to 74% in the winter. And then we're down to 68% in the spring. So, some of our challenges that we faced, we know that our third grade class, we have to be very, very intentional with. They missed so many instructional minutes due to the pandemic. So, we knew that we needed to be really intentional with this group, and I feel like we have been. However, we still are facing a lot of skill deficits there. So, in the fall, they came in at 62%. Of them were proficient. We maintained that in the winter, and then we fell to 59% in the spring. So, kind of the silver lining here is that when we really drill down... I'm not happy with the scores, but when we really drill down, we are seeing that they're making about 10 points of growth. So, that's kind of a silver lining. Seven students grew 20 points or more. And we even had one student that almost made 100 points of growth. So, we know that teaching and learning is happening. We just have to be even more intentional with some of those skill deficits.
Now, this may be too detailed to know off the top of your head. To understand that 98-point growth, what's the point number for proficiency for the third graders?
I don't know that that... I don't think what you're asking and that number can go together. What you're asking is what would be the typical growth of a third grader versus what? Because that's the growth, not necessarily the...
Right. Well, I was thinking like, somebody grew two grade levels worth.
Absolutely.
If you... Which is why I was curious.
I can look it up and find it out.
And the expected rate of growth, Richard, changes for each grade level. So, it's a whole chart.
But thank you for that question because it kind of puts into perspective, like, did they know nothing and grow 100 points? Or, yeah, definitely. And we'll give you the plus scores for that. So, some successes that we had in literacy, when we really drilled down to accuracy, we know that our students need to have that skill in order to comprehend. So, that's really one of the most important skills, in my opinion. And so, we were very intentional, knowing that we had some students that had some deficits there. So, to be a good reader or to be able to read... To be able to read at grade level, you're going to need to be 90 to 100% accurate in your reading. So, in second and third grade, we really wanted to highlight that they grew a ton. In second grade, they came in in the fall at 67% being proficient in accuracy and grew to 96%. So, a nice 29-point gain. I truly believe that because we were intentional with that, they are going to be better readers for years to come. It's going to pay dividends. Third grade, 67% were proficient. That grew to 93% over the course of the year, again, setting them up for future success. Because we know that if students aren't reading on grade level by the end of third grade, they're going to struggle. So, we have to make sure that they have all those components. I was waiting for this slide. And then another just huge point of pride for Grant Wood is our kindergarten data. In the fall, this is overall, this isn't just accuracy, but overall, our kindergartners came in, 67 of them, 67% were proficient. And then in the winter, that ballooned to 97%. In the spring, we're 90% proficient. So, that just completely rocked that goal of 80%. Whatever that recipe is, we've got to duplicate it, triplicate it. But they just knocked it out of the park. And I think that, you know, the implementation of UFLI and some of the other strategies our kindergarten team used, it was just an outstanding year for literacy in those grades. And those three teachers, definitely kudos to them. So, where we go from there, because we didn't meet our goal, and we're not satisfied with that. So, we have to continue to encourage our teachers at Grant Wood to participate in the letters training. We know that the science of reading is real, and it's here to stay, and we need to embrace it. And I would say that the staff at Grant Wood has, but not everybody has taken that step for letters training. So, we're going to continue to offer that as a district and encourage them. We're going to make sure that our Tier One interventions that are happening in the classroom are robust and that we're really making sure that at Tier One, that we're solid. I firmly believe with our new curricular materials, that's going to really be beneficial in solidifying Tier One. Again, UFLI, we're doing that K3 in Tier One and Tier Two, and we're seeing very positive results. I know when we were looking at adopting a new curriculum, that was... My teachers are telling me, "If UFLI goes, you know, we're going to be really upset." So, just to be able to see how much they've embraced something new, because change is hard, was awesome to see. Also, in Tier Two and Three, we are continuing to have very robust conversations about interventions and making sure that we are providing the appropriate interventions that are really tailored to student needs. We will continue to have building and district level PLC meetings. I think that I personally, as a second grade facilitator, and I think those conversations are so crucial, especially when we look at district-wide data. We have to know what's working in other buildings that we can duplicate, and we have to be able to share what's working for us. This year, we did the spelling diagnostic screener, and that was crucial for us to be able to drill down and see where those deficits were. Fast is great, but it's just a screener. So, to really be able to dig in that spelling diagnostic was key. We'll continue to do our fast testing three times per year, and we monitor that very closely. I'm happy to report that our student success team is up and running and doing some great work and really making database decisions. So, we're going to continue to refine that team and ensure that those conversations are giving students what they need. Classroom teachers have done a great job with their progress monitoring and being very diligent and ensuring that, again, that students are growing. And then we'll continue to engage with Reading Core and Reunited to give those extra boosts to our K3 students. Any questions about literacy before I move on to math? I know sometimes this can all run together. So, just wanted to take a pause if you had any questions. Great. So, our mathematics goal, again, was rooted in learning and achievement for all and ensuring that we're preparing our staff members to support and challenge all students. Specifically, at Grant Wood, we were looking at growing that percentage of proficient students from 75 to 85% and measuring, the measuring tool being Fast Screech. So, here's our snapshot from Grant Wood. We started off at 75%, dipped a little bit to 74, and then finished out in our spring data at 76% of our students being proficient. So, our challenge in math, we showed some really great individual growth. But in fifth grade and third grade, overall, we saw... grade and third grade, overall, we saw a decline, and that really affected our ability to get to that eighty-five percent. So we saw a four percent decline from fall to spring in fifth grade, and then a six percent decline in third grade. However, always looking for the silver lining, in fifth grade, I just want to note that eighty-two percent of our students did grow. So even though twenty-eight percent were not proficient, we saw some great growth in fifth grade, as well as in third grade. Eighty-eight percent of our students in third grade showed growth, even though thirty-one percent weren't proficient.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Any specific reasons why that you can take out of that as to why that's happening between third and fifth grade?
So one thing about FAST is it might not always be the same students. You might have, you know, some students move in or leave. So that's going to impact your data. For example, we had some students come to us in the spring that had not been in school in the United States. So they were already struggling with a language barrier and then taking the test, which is perfectly acceptable. We love having them, we wrap our arms around them, but it is going to impact our overall data in that way. Did I answer your question, or?
And about how many students were in that cohort? About? That came from out of the United States about?
We actually were in a unique situation at Grant Wood, that this spring, we had nine students come from three different countries, which was an amazing experience for our students to be able to engage with some students from Brazil, some students from the Congo, and some students from, they spoke Arabic, I should know, but, so there's, you know, that huge advantage of that cultural competency, too.
Thank you, thanks.
So I just want to point out some successes in math. Our first graders really made great gains. They start off as a-
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
This is another data walk question.
Yeah.
Is it possible to sort of pull out a subset of students who took it in the fall and the spring, so that you exclude students who moved out and students who moved in, and see if that group changes or has particular growth?
Do you want me to?
You go first, then I'll-
It can be done. It's very time-intensive for the short gain of a test that you're benchmarking three times a year, if that makes sense. We know off the top of our head, as Jill will probably attest, as she's looking at scores and looking at grades, you know, we have these kids in this class or things like that, that we can make kind of that mental adjustment. While it can be done, it is not an easy task. And from my lens of the assessment side-
You can't do a simple sort of-
Of outliers.
Nope.
Not in the system that we use.
Yeah. And from my lens, there's other ways to use our time to really get to that nitty-gritty side of things.
Right. And you can glance at it and say, aha, look, yes, these new students who moved in a week before we took the test weren't proficient. Shocking that.
Right.
Right?
However, what I do want to add, and I was going to, I made a note to say at the end of the presentation, but you've opened the door to it, Director Lynch. One of the things we're starting to see, especially at Neil Armstrong and Grant Wood, that the state doesn't require us to track, but I have experience tracking, is our transancy rates. So the ins and outs. How many students move, you know, how many start the year and finish the year versus how many come in, come out? And when they come in, how many schools have they been in previous to us? Like, it would, we have a couple students in our district that when they came to us in the early elementary grades, they had already probably been in five different schools. And so that, too, impacts, right? Because each district might be, while we cover the same standards, you just might be, depending on your curriculum and your scope and sequence, in a different place, right? So you might get something repeated, but you might have missed a standard because of where you left and came in. And so in conversations with Erin and Jamie, as we all continue to work together on this, and as I had some ahas this year, is I really want us to figure out a method for how do we track that transancy piece? Probably won't get that level of data you were asking for, but I think it's important. If we realize, I think, when I looked at Neil Armstrong, from August to January, twenty-three percent of the students had changed over from August to January. And in a two-section building, that's a tremendous change, right? That impact. So those students taking winter FastBridge testing, twenty-three percent of them weren't there when we took the fall. So as you look at that comparative data, I don't want to use that to explain out any variances or why we didn't grow, but to your point, it brings up an important thing that we need to be mindful of. And how do we make sure we're staying, like, how do we differentiate? How do we become intentional, in Jill's words, around providing those students the specific things that they need, right? And so that is a data point that we are looking, how do we track it? And how can we develop a system to do it easily, so it doesn't become cumbersome? When it becomes, you have to manually do something. We just don't have the staff power to do all that manual calculation.
Can I add on to that?
Please.
That's one of the reasons, I think, that as a board, we've really asked you as leader to make sure that at least in our schools, right, that we have that curricular alignment across all of the buildings. Because then, if they're moving in our district, it levels that playing field a little bit more. If they're coming from out of district, there's only so much we can do. You know, we can screen and then look at what interventions they need. But that's why it is so important when we're making these decisions about math and ELA particularly, curriculum, that, you know, we've taken the time to really look and make sure that we've got things that teachers are going to be on board with as well, so that they are showing fidelity to that curriculum, and it'll be the same. You know, whether they're at Grant Wood, or Neil Armstrong, or Paul Norton, or wherever they are, they're going to have that really strong basis, even if they move within our district. So that's something I think that's, that we've worked on, or you've worked on, I shouldn't say we, but you've worked on the last couple of years, and I think that that's going to show benefits in the future.
We as a team, the board team and our teams at the sites, it's something we have committed ourselves to, because we also, to your point, Director Smithson, have many students that will move within our own districts. They'll move buildings once or twice while they're in their elementary years for a variety of reasons. And so we want to be mindful that they can, it's like, they leave off one place at that school, and the next day when they start at their new school in our district, they pick up where they kind of left off. So, thank you, Professor Smithson. And thank you for, both of you, for the great questions.
So success in math, we saw great gains in first grade, coming in, in the fall, seventy-two percent were proficient, and then that grew to seventy-seven, and then in the spring, eighty-four percent were proficient. So I was very pleased with the growth in first grade. Likewise, fourth grade came in really high at seventy-nine percent, dipped a bit to seventy-one percent in the winter, and then in the spring, eighty-two percent. So proud of the work that our first and fourth grade students have done, and their teachers, of course, too. So for math, our action plan, again, we'll be using the FastScrener three times a year. We've got an excellent intervention program with Bridges that we just need to stay the course with that and make sure that students are getting what they need from that intervention tool. We also need to really ensure that our curricular materials are being used with integrity, that all of our grade levels are really embracing our math curriculum. And then also offering that professional development opportunity for both IM and for Bridges. So for our main curriculum and then for our interventions. And just really ensuring that all teachers have total access to those programs and can use them with integrity. We'll continue our intervention groups. We'll continue to use Title I to support mathematics. And I'm very pleased with the direction we're going with student-centered coaching. Heather is our coach here, and she's been engaging in some really meaningful work with a few of our grade levels centered around math and the math curriculum. So I'm feeling very positive about the direction we're going in in math. And our third goal is our social-emotional behavior health, our SEBH goal. And that is grounded in the district priority of providing multi-tiered system of support and setting high expectations for students. So it was really important for me, coming in this year, to really focus on shoring up and creating a communication plan with fidelity for discipline systems. So I know that some of my colleagues have talked to you about ODRs or Office Discipline referrals. For me, I wanted to take an opportunity to really get a pulse of the building and how teachers felt that our SEBH was going. Because perception's reality. So to be able to really impact students in that way, I wanted to first start with teachers. So using the teacher fidelity inventory, or the TFI, to really measure how they were feeling. And this kind of came about organically, too, because at the beginning of the year, we offered some professional development around our behavior matrix. So huge shout-out to Sarah Harris and her team. They really shored up what that behavior matrix looked like, and made things a lot clearer for our teachers. So it kind of came organically, that like, with this in place and with new leadership in place, we should be able to grow in this area. The TFI is something that we take every year, so you'll see on the next slide some of those data point. Oh, next slide. Slide after this one. If you go back to RCRS. So I know that you all have eight different buildings that you're constantly looking at, so I just wanted to remind you that our expectations at Grant Wood are RCRS. So that means responsible, caring, respectful, and safe. So that really is what all of our expectations behaviorally are grounded in. Thank you.
Lee, I have a question on the previous slide.
Oh, yeah.
About the interventions, like, is it like middle school, where you have major and minor offenses? Is it similar to the matrix that middle school uses?
Yes, you bet. We refined that. I was not part of the work since I didn't come on board until July, but really delineating what a major versus a minor is, and also really delineating what behavior goes with what. Because you can, one teacher might think, that's disruptive, and another teacher might say, that's disrespectful to me. So being able to provide some professional development for our teachers, so that we're all on the same page with what those behaviors look like in some ways.
And when there is a referral, does the teacher give feedback on what happened with his or her referral? Like, was the student yada yada? Or was the student, yeah, three days or two days of just a conference with the principal? Does the teacher get feedback on their referrals?
So they do, but it doesn't, so Infinite Campus is the platform that we use, it doesn't automatically send them an update. So it's up to the building leader to then provide that information to the teacher.
And you work at that? Do you work at that?
That's me, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And just, I think I heard you ask about the matrix. As you all recall, we presented to you all before the start of next school, or, last school year. Good lord, it's been a year, huh? That we developed and implemented a district-wide behavior matrix. Now, we have a K five and a six-twelve, just because developmentally, students in the elementary versus secondary range, we have some different expectations, and there are different places in their development. But it is a district-wide expectation that all of our staff, administrators, and certified classified staff, we use that behavior matrix to guide the work that we do.
Okay, so the TFI measures these different categories, and I'll kind of walk through them. But what we're looking for is at least one percentage point of growth in each category. I wanted to take it back a couple of years to really get a good picture of what Grant Wood has, what the perception at Grant Wood has been like since I was new this year. So for this one, I did do the 2021, 2022, and then our current school year. So when it talks about expectations being defined, again, we use RCRS at Grant Wood. So when we're talking about expectations being defined, we're talking about in the classroom, how we line up, how we are in the cafeteria, getting our tray of food, how we are on the playground, all of those expectations. And so we can see that in 2021, ninety-six percent of the teachers felt like expectations were really clearly defined. And then that dropped a bit to ninety-four percent, but rebounded to ninety-six percent. So I felt good that we were clearly defining what we were expecting kids to do. Because if we don't know what they're supposed to be doing, then they certainly are not going to be able to meet that expectation. Then we move over to expectations being taught, and that had been at ninety-eight percent, went down to ninety-one percent, and then rebounded to ninety-four percent. So again, that's ninety-four percent of the teachers at Grant Wood feel like these are being taught, explicitly taught. When we talk about our reward system at Grant Wood, we use the doggy dollar. So the reward system is our token economy, and the doggy dollar might be given for a student being really caring and helping a classmate pick up a book they dropped. I mean, it can be for a variety of reasons, but our teachers are doing an excellent job of using this token economy to really incentivize the appropriate behaviors. So we can see that that reward system was at eighty percent a couple of years ago, climbed to eighty-five, and now is at eighty-nine percent. And just to elaborate a little bit more on the doggy dollar, they can be used then for students to purchase different things. My personal favorite is when our students purchase stuffed animal days, so they get to bring their stuffed animal to sit with them. So it's going to be a variety of things like that. It might be lunch outside. It might be a class-wide where they get to have a pajama day, et cetera. So that's what the reward system is, and we saw great growth in that. The violation system, just really understanding, again, that behavior matrix was crucial in seeing that growth for the violation system from last year to this year. Like, it really shored up for a lot of folks, what does defiance look like versus disrespect versus disruption, and ensuring that we're recording it correctly, so that we can do some targeted interventions based on the misbehavior.
The three Ds.
The three Ds, that's right. The monitoring piece, we were very fortunate to have a strong SST, Student Success Team this year, that was monitoring this data. We, from week to week, would rotate between academic data and behavior data. I want to say a huge shout-out to Erin Pesca, because she created a behavior dashboard that really helped us in monitoring the behavior. So thank you for that, Erin. And gave us very specific points that we could monitor and ensure that our students were getting the support that they needed in those areas. So we saw some great growth there, too, that our teachers felt like the SST team, myself, we were on top of monitoring what was going on. And that also leads into the management piece, that we were able to enjoy some growth there, that teachers felt like this whole system was being managed, and improved it a four percent in the management portion. District support, I thought was really interesting when I first looked at the data point from twenty-one to twenty-two, that ninety-six percent to eighty-five percent. So I was curious to know what happened there. I still don't have an answer to that. But I do know that the district has invested so many supports, Sarah Harris being a crucial member of that. But also, we rely heavily on the district behavior coach, Dane Hendrickson, to offer some of that support. So you can see, we enjoyed tremendous growth in that category. And I'm very thankful to all of you for giving us those supports and approving those supports so that our teachers can learn and grow. And then our implementation average, people feel like our PBIS system in service of SEBH is being implemented with fidelity, and we're definitely on the right track in that area. So some successes and challenges, when we do the TFI and gather that data, we also are very intentional about zooming in at each tier to see where we're at. So just kind of as a reminder, when we look at the pyramid, that bigger piece- So just kind of as a reminder, when we look at the pyramid, that bigger piece at the bottom, 80% should be there. I mean, tier one's what everybody gets, but we know that 80% are probably going to be right there. And then when we look at tier two, that's going to be about 15% of our kids. And then when we look at tier three, we know that those are kids that need extra support. And that's usually about 3% to 5% of our students. So just making sure that while we have a great PBIS system at Grant Wood, making sure we're being very intentional in helping the kids that need it the most. So I was very enlightened by just seeing these different scores and the growth here. At tier one, people felt, you know, 87% of people felt like everything was being implemented with fidelity, but it was great to see that teachers feel, 92% of teachers feel like at tier two, we're really getting kids what they need, we're monitoring things very closely, you know, we're doing the right things for kids. And then to see at tier three, with some of our most challenging kids, teachers are feeling like, hey, we're moving in the right direction. So I'm really proud of that growth, because we know that we're here for academics, but until we can prepare our kids to learn and have that safe and welcoming and inclusive environment, we're probably not going to learn to our best.
Can I just commend you on that? Because so your tier two and your tier three kids are the kids that are more challenging, right? That are having more discipline issues. And if your staff is feeling like those students are receiving what they need, that is huge. Because oftentimes what you hear from teachers is, you know, it's the kids who need it the most, right? That aren't getting that intervention. You know, and so that's huge. I just wanted to say, that's, wow, I'm impressed by that.
Thank you, Director Spencer. I, that probably my main takeaway from this whole presentation is that slide there, that we're really making sure that kids are getting what they need to be better scholars. So we'll continue with our SEBH plan. Again, Erin Pesca and her dashboard, you really need to market that, because it's a game changer, but not too much, so market it too much. But, you know, we'll continue to use that tool. It's vital for us to be able to see, like, that dashboard will drill down. For example, it'll say, we're having more behaviors at noon, on the playground, physical aggression. So we can be intentional with our teaching, and we can also see who's at recess at noon. But, you know, it really gives us a very clear picture, so that we can address what students need. So we'll continue to use that, and we'll continue to use Panorama and classroom data to make sure that our SST team has the data to make the informed decisions. We'll continue to rely on our Conditions for Learning Survey to just get that overall panoramic view of how people are feeling. We use the SDQ screer in fourth grade to really ensure that we're taking care of that grade level. Obviously, we'd love to give the SDQ to all students, but that's just, at this point in time, not possible, but it's such a great picture of where we need to be intentional. And then we'll review our TFI, like we did this year, and make sure that we're continuing to see growth, and we'll engage in our professional development over PBIS. I am very fortunate that Mr. Kane was the principal before me and really had a strong foundation in PBIS, so I've been able to step into a very good situation with PBIS. And now it's up to me to continue to keep it rolling, but we'll offer that professional development. We'll rely heavily on Sarah Harris for some of that too. And we'll continue to have our doggy dollars and our PBIS incentives and take that positive approach. And then finally, our school counselor, he is amazing, and the paths lessons that he teaches alongside our classroom teachers really makes a difference with SEBH, and just being able to be super intentional with some of the skill deficits that we're seeing with students in terms of SEBH. So kind of in summation, you know, where I plan to go from here with my building leadership team and staff is just to continue to be very analytical with data. We're fortunate that we have extensive tools that we can use to be diagnostic and be prepared for the types of interventions our kids need. This year, we were very fortunate to add that extra layer of support and having intensification meetings for interventions and really drilling down in the data. I know some other sites were a little bit ahead of us, but I feel like Grant Wood is definitely there now, having those robust conversations. Every six to eight weeks, we're looking at how we can move kids to where they need to be to get the skills that they need to have. Again, I know I said earlier in the presentation, but I'm so excited about Student Center Coaching. It's something that, you know, we've really embarked on this year and then next year with full implementation. I think that is going to, in service of student achievement, it's going to be tremendous. And I know that Heather's excited about that challenge too. And then finally, we will continue to have professional development in the areas of literacy and math. I got to pop in today to our first grade teachers kind of looking through the new curricular resource, and our third grade teachers as well. And it was just exciting work, getting to see those materials, getting to see the crosswalk of standards that's happening. So super excited about having that resource. Again, thank you for approving that. And I think that's going to pay dividends. It's going to be the alignment that we need. We'll continue at Grant Wood to have a strong building leadership team and PBIS team, and I think most importantly, continuing to revisit expectations and how with students and just having those constant reminders. We assume that kids know how to act, and we have to stop assuming that and really be intentional with our teaching of how kids are, what our expectations are. So we're going to just keep on going at Grant Wood, and I know this meeting was moving along quite quickly until I got up. Apologize for that, but.
That'll be the funniest thing anyone's ever said.
Any questions or comments?
No.
I do want to say one thing. I had the privilege of being in your building a number of times this school year, and I just want to tell you that I could literally feel and see all of the hard work taking place by your staff, by the support staff. The teachers are amazing, and the kids are incredible. So thank you for all the work you are all doing.
Thank you.
I am eager to see, now that you've got a year under your belt, how you think about what the goals you want to set for next year are.
Yeah.
And we'll get to see them in the back room after you're saying how long we do it, but interesting to see what you think of what you want to focus on.
Absolutely. Big believer in that continuous cycle for improvement, so keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Heather.
All right, Princess 25.03, you see SEBH data presentation. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. I'm glad she was able to slow us down, because I always know how excited you are when I get here.
You're going to make up for lost time.
I guess, I'm going to go super fast. It'll be dependent on your questions, so I'm going to push it right back at you. Strategically pick the picture. It's either people are running to listen to the data, or they're running away from the presentation. It can be either way that you choose to look at that. But to start off, I am just going to cover tonight that spring benchmark for that Fast Bridge data. Everything comes back to the priorities that we're looking at. And for us, for this snapshot, is that learning and achievement for all, and then that student accessibility and support as we look at how to meet the needs of all of our students. So I'm going to start you off with literacy data. That picture was strategically placed too, because who can't smile when they think about the parachute and gym class? So those are some of my Armstrong friends enjoying the day out, running across Alaska and enjoying the parachute. So early reading, if you remember, this is the test that we give to our kindergartners and our first graders. It's measuring those critical early reading skills. This is that test that has to be given one-on-one. So we kind of do an all-hands-on-deck approach when we do this, especially in the fall, because it's a little bit different for everybody to start that way, because we literally come out of the gates ready to go. So if you look at this, we had some significant change, especially with our kindergartners. You're looking at percent proficient. Change was great, but I always encourage you to remember, it's that growth is really that critical part of this, but obviously, the proficiency is what, you know, people look at overall. A lot of our time and energy has been at these two grade levels. So as we continue through the data, I just remind you that we've been putting a lot of our time in kindergarten and first, and it has been paying off. As you can see, kindergarten, we've got a huge gain out of that. And that's thanks to the hard work of our teachers, their willingness to change things, their willingness throughout this entire year to stop, reflect, process. Even in January, we stopped and said, all right, what can we do? Here's our numbers. And they were willing to make changes. Obviously, none of this would have happened without Rhonda, who came out of the woodwork. She's in a class right now for a doctorate, but she got a pass from her teacher to attend. So I'm sure she will jump in here pretty soon when she wants to correct me. First grade, we also made good growth in that, so remember, that's early reading, totally different test. As we go on to the next slide, you're, oh, see, you're slowing it down. Director Lynch, I'm trying to catch up time. No, go ahead, what's up?
This is district-wide data.
Correct.
We're presenting here.
I'm district-wide.
And will it be possible next year, for example, to sort of, if we could go back to that slide real quick? Does it work that 77 proficient at the end of kindergarten, we would hope to see 77 proficient at the beginning of first grade?
It's going to be summer slide.
Or would that help us quantify the summer metal?
So I'm going to tell you, I really appreciate that question, because that is something that I've been looking at, because sometimes we get that snapshot in kindergarten, and we may have them at that point in time. This is one day of, you know, 177 days, but what is the retention rate of that information? So that is something that we are looking at, is we got them here now, you know, on whatever day this was, May 28th, when these kids took that, coming in, where are they at? We're going to expect some sort of slide. I mean, it's just part of life. If I don't use a skill, I lose it, and then it takes me a little while to get it back. However, we want to start tracking how big, and we want that summer slide to get smaller and smaller each time. So yes, we've already tracked that from last year to this year, and we didn't have the things in place that we do, and we'll continue to track that into next year. I do have some later on, some longitudinal data for you and cohort data that kind of shows over time, from spring to spring. But yeah, we do track fall to spring, because part of that's retention. I can have it today, but if I don't retain it later on, it's not really a skill that I have. Does that?
Yes.
Sort of answer? All right. So remember, our next one is our A reading, so again, we're looking at that percent proficient. Again, I'm looking at fall to spring. If you remember, I came in February and showed you fall to winter. Instead of continuing that, I just decided, where did we start at the beginning of the year? Where did we end up? As you look, we're kind of hit and miss. We're a little bit all over the place. I can sit here and give you a lot of different reasons for each grade level of where we're at, but I'm going to remind you that we have spent a lot of our time and effort into K-12. If you remember back on our other one, that was where we had that growth that was going. Our third graders, I haven't hidden the fact that that is just, that that group's had a rough elementary career with COVID. We are seeing that we're getting, you know, that gap closed, but we're also having to do skills earlier from second and first grade that they didn't get, and that's causing us to still have a little bit of delay as we go along. Six, seventh, and eighth, if you remember the last time I was here, I believe it was Director Smithson who challenged me to say, now, what are we going to do in terms of curriculum with our middle school? And I said I accepted that challenge. It doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't happen in a few months. We have some good things in place, but like we learned with our elementary, we've got to get that training in first. We have to get that knowledge to our teachers about what it is that we're looking at, what it is that as we start to decide what a curriculum is, what do we need and what are we lacking? If we jump right into just trying to adopt a curriculum, I think we're going to struggle to figure out what it really is that we think our students need. So we've set up some PD that's ready to go. Again, Rhonda's going to lead that for us. It's very similar to letters. It's called Aspire, and we're going to take our middle school teachers, AIs and special ed teachers in language arts through that, and that's going to help set that stage for this is what it needs to look like for these students. And then we can take that next step of what curriculums are out there that can support us in doing that. It's going to be a year, few years process. I'm not going to stand up here one year from now and bring you something to adopt for them, probably something to adopt somewhere, but not for that, because we have a process that we need to go through to get there.
To your point, that is exactly what I wanted to hear you say.
Oh, well, there you go.
I do not want anyone, I have worked with curriculums that have not really been vetted without the learning, right? Let's just start it, okay? And that is not the right way of going about it. So for you to sit up there and say it's going to be a while, because we need to do this training first, shows me that you have a solid, really solid basis for how curriculums are chosen, the needs of our teachers, the needs of our students, the needs of our districts. So thank you. That is exactly the right answer.
We've got a good team that's just looking at that, and again, we all want it to have it tomorrow, and that's for sure. It just can't to have it done right. Otherwise, we just spend money that isn't doing what it needs to. So when you look at that, again, remember, this switches to a computer adaptive test. I do want you to recognize that this really starts to focus heavily on that vocabulary and that comprehension. So for our students that still aren't able to decode, who still have, you know, phonics gaps, this becomes much harder for them, and that's where we have to go back and do more diagnostic testing to figure out. A reading is a really big snapshot, but for us to really do anything with that data, we have to really dig down to see where those deficits are, and then how do we help? It just looks very different. As you get into the older grades, it gets harder and harder. And that's why we really chose to focus on K-12, because we have got to get that foundational skill set and strong within our district. If we work from the top down, we're just going to continue to see those same problems years over years. Questions on this part of the literacy? I got more, don't worry. I don't want you to think I'm done. So I went ahead and put together some cohort data. Everybody always wants to know, what's it look like compared to the year before? This is trying to compare apples to apples. I say it's not like, you know, gala to gala apples. We're looking at different kinds of apples, because we do have kids that move in and move out and changes that happen there. If you remember, and you look at that, I went back to the spring of 17, 18, then we have 18, 19, and if you notice, 19, 20 isn't there, because that's when we closed down. So nobody took any spring assessments. And then when you look at 2021, we chose coming out of the closure to do that CBMR, because we needed data that was super quick, that we could run with, and we were using other things to get those kids back in. So I say this each time, maybe in five years, if I'm still standing here, I'll be able to give you cleaner data and really show you over time, but this is the closest that I can give you to show those comparisons of as close to the same kids as possible over time. So I talk a lot about, you know, proficiency, because that's what everybody looks at, you know, that's what's on the news, that's what's in the paper, that's what the state looks at. But really, as educators, we want to look at growth, because proficiency can look very different. I can be a non-proficient kid that's just at the bubble, and I can be a non-proficient kid that's at the first percentile, and we're labeled the same. Those two kids on, you know, our last few charts are the exact same, and that isn't necessarily the case as we move them along. It's going to take that kid in the fifth percentile much longer to close that gap than it might take somebody in that 39th percentile. So I challenge Rhonda, I'm not going to claim any fame to gathering this data, is So I challenge Rhonda, I'm not gonna claim any fame to gathering this data, is what are we looking at for our fluency growth? Because on that side of it, our oral reading fluency is as important, if not more important, than the scores that you're seeing that A reading is measuring. Because without that, without that oral reading fluency, they can't develop their vocabulary. And that vocabulary, what I said, is really what that A reading is starting to measure. We had to step back. We started to see our kids during COVID, especially when we were shut down and stuff, they didn't have access to those complex texts. They didn't have that same type of access that in a typical year that they should have access to. And so what we had to do was go back and fill in those gaps. Well, by doing that, there's only so much time in a day, we were also not getting them to those complex texts. So our third and fourth graders really take a hit on that when you start to look at that data. We had to go back and make sure they could decode before they could start looking at those advanced vocabulary skills. So we're gonna have a few more years where we're just trying to balance that out. However, I think in the end, we're really going to start to reap those benefits as those kids get older. So as you look at this, we went from words correct per minute, that's what WCPM stands for. And so we were looking at where our second graders were in the fall to where they ended up in the spring. And as you can see, we had huge growth in that. With that comes confidence for kids. You know, reading can sometimes be a love-hate relationship for our kids. And they look around, and the whole world is about reading. Whether it's a sign, whether it's, you know, a webpage, whether it's TikTok, whatever it is, it's everywhere. And you can't escape that. So the more we can build that confidence that we can start to look at, you know, just kids who like to come to school again. Math has a lot more reading in it. All, everything has a lot more reading in it. And so those kids that struggle with reading start to hate everything about school. So if you look, our second grade median growth was about forty-nine correct words per minute, and our third grade was at thirty-eight. So along with fluency, our next slide is gonna talk to you a little bit about, oh, go back one more. I'm fast, but not that fast. There you go. We also have the accuracy. I can read super fast, but if I pronounce every single word wrong when I get to the end and you ask me about the story, I probably have no idea, but I got it done super quick, and now I can move on to my next task. So we make sure that as we're looking at kids, we're looking at both sides. Are you fluent? Can you read quickly? But can you also read accurately? And as we look at students that read, if I have to take a super long time to read that, then my comprehension at the end is not very good. I look at myself now, I love to read. It takes me a good year to get through a book. By the time I get to the end, I can't remember what happened in the beginning. I can just start to read backwards again. So as we look at this, our goal is for all students to demonstrate ninety-five percent or higher for accuracy from here on out. That is our goal, to get all students there. So if you look at second grade, we came in in that fall at ninety-five percent. We have our kids at ninety-nine percent. With that, remember, accuracy comes and then that fluency. So they can be reading accurately, but reading slowly. So the idea though is if we can get that accuracy down, then we can start to build that fluency up and move a little bit better there. And then we're at ninety-eight and ninety-nine in third grade. So we've made great gains in getting our kids where we need. Now we gotta take that next step, get that fluency going. So one of the things that I think is critical as we look at just our district as a whole, we know that our high school and our middle school are targeted schools for ESSA. And we start to look at that, and that isn't a secondary issue. And if you remember, we brought in all of our sites to do the SAME work, to start really digging into what's going on. Because ultimately, it comes back to what we're doing at the elementary. It's not anybody's fault, but we all feed into that same system. So we decided to start pulling out those student groups because independently, one building may not have what qualifies as enough students to be a targeted school. If I don't have that twenty-plus, but if I bring all the buildings together, I have it. And that's what happens when they get to middle school. So we may have had this issue for years, we just didn't know it because we weren't looking at it as a district lens. So now we're starting to look at it through a district lens. So I strategically picked these categories as I did it. We are targeted at the middle and the high school level for our Black or African-American, multiracial, and IEP. I think that low SES is a critical one for us to keep an eye on. So I chose to add that one in there. And a lot of these students may cross more than one of those categories. These aren't individual students necessarily, they may be in more than one category. So as you look at this, our proficiency, so what you're seeing with our Black and African-American, forty-four percent were proficient in the fall. We did gain up to forty-eight. Obviously, are we, you know, thrilled with that number? No, but it is gains that we're making. And I think as we went through the SAME process and we start to look at things a little bit more closely, we can start to better target those groups and look more specifically on what's being done. So you can see how that phased out. IEPs are always really tough because those students are often, yes, they're non-proficient. But what you have to remember is not every kid in that category necessarily has a reading goal. IEP, when we look at that, is an overarching category. So I could have a behavior goal, I could have a math goal, I could have a reading goal. So we can't just say, oh, well, they have a reading goal, and that's, we really have to look at that. And it's not send them out with an IEP and, you know, hope that we close that gap. It's how do we do that all together? So those kind of our student groups for literacy. Yes, Director Castle?
Just an observation, I'd like to see why, or is there a reason why Hispanic kids aren't included in this chart?
I would tell you, they're not a group that is, they always do very well. So I picked out our group.
That'd be nice to see.
She selected, as she said, she selected the targeting groups.
Okay, I missed that, alright.
Right. I can provide you with that data, but I will tell you, our Hispanic is usually one of our top student groups that's performing. I chose to pick the ones that we're targeted for.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now I've got, I've been debating whether to ask this now, or you're gonna give us a very similar slide in a few minutes for the math.
Oh, no, I'm just gonna stop at literacy, but thanks for asking. Yes.
So I was debating whether I should wait until you got to the math slide.
Slow down, Director Lynch, slow down. Yes, I'm gonna get there to math.
Is it possible to do a kind of scatter graph? Particularly? What?
That is so in the weeds.
Particularly in these groups where our performance is not where we want it to be, to sort of see if we're looking at Black, African-American, or we're looking at low SES, or we're looking at IEPs?
Go deeper on what you're wanting that graph to show.
Which individuals, like, where do they fall? Are there a lot that are really close and just, just missing proficiency? Or a lot in their first, fifth percentile?
We're able to do that a little bit within our system. So we have kids that are at risk, and then we have kids that are persistently at risk. And so within that, and that's, I can, I can present to you risk differential and tell you where those kids fall out. It's not gonna be in a scatter graph, but I can.
I mean, I was just trying to get conceptualized. How would it sort of be easy to visualize? And that was the first idea that I had. Not necessarily the best.
It's, I I would say yes, I can create that, and if you direct me to, I definitely will. What I would say is we're able to dig that deeper as a building level and look at our at-risk categories. They're automatically flagged as persistently at risk, meaning for two times in a row, they've been at risk. So we're showing a trend that we're not moving them out of that category. And if you have it once, you're considered at risk. From there though, it would be a lot of work if you want me to show all of those students. I mean, you're looking at probably three hundred, four hundred kids for each, each grade level. If you want to look all over, if you want me to just pick out those different ones, we could do it, yeah?
The point is not that you should leave. The point is, would that be useful for us to think about?
I think the buildings are doing that in a different way. I think each of the buildings are looking at their student groups in a, in a way to, to track that over time. I don't know that that's data that I can present in a nice, pretty chart for you. But when they meet in their groups and they do their regrouping meetings and all of that stuff, they know their kids, so they know Jamie's, you know, falls into these three categories. And they're, they're looking at it that way. I think we do a good job of tracking that with, at the building level. I don't know that we do that. I look at it more as a broader lens from the district level.
So your student success teams would do that at the building level? They would be like, so they would look at students and say, okay, so this student is not only in the subgroup, right? But is also not meeting in math, but does meet in reading or, and not meeting in this area, right? And they would then tailor that student's plan.
And I'm gonna be honest, that's not data that I want to see brought forward to the board. That's being handled at a building level. You guys are the paid professionals for that, and providing us that information is way too in the weeds for us. And I always, when I come, want to show that broader view. I can, you know, show individual buildings and things like that, but I just think that that's, I know they're handling it that, at their level. I know that that's the challenge that we've given them. And then I need to look from that district lens to see, as a district, are we moving forward? But yes, we definitely, as we've gone through the SAME training for all of our teams, that has been the big push. When I talked about this kickoff for that, I talked about we have to do better at looking at our student groups. And it can't be a cursory, once a year, you put a chart up and you say it. It has to be looked at throughout the entire year across a lot of different data points. We have to be looking at, Jill said it best, like, if we don't get behavior under control, kids don't feel safe enough to, to, you know, become vulnerable and learn. And that's our first start is where we're going with that. So as a district, do we need to get better at looking at our student groups? Yes. Are we getting there? We've made a lot of progress in a year of really digging deep into those student groups. And being targeted schools of the secondary has, you know, has its pros and cons. And in this case, it's, you know, allowed us to say, hey, you gotta focus on this. And now we don't have a choice.
And I think you're right that we need to focus on it earlier in their careers to solve the problem.
Correct. It's not a, I was at middle school, and I was always frustrated because they would say, oh, look, they get to middle school and everyone's non-proficient. Well, it wasn't necessarily the case. They just all came together in one building, and now we had one student count for sixth grade versus five buildings. So I get that from being on the other side of that and, you know, dealing with the questions of why do we drop so much in our different groups? And I think that by bringing our elementary along for this journey is gonna be very powerful.
So, sorry.
What I was gonna say is your support of adding our MTSS positions in the literacy, math, and SCDH have helped us get to that level of detail with data, and then Erin's done a tremendous job. So most specifically, Rhonda and Erin have developed really detailed, interactive spreadsheets, especially Rhonda has, in working with our elementary teams and really elevating the regrouping process. I can't do it justice to speak to the level of detail of Rhonda's, of her spreadsheets. But I mean, it is interactive, and they can, by entering this data, see quickly, it's all color-coded, the amount of growth, or which students, how many, I don't know, words they read. I can't even think of all the cells that you have, Rhonda. I haven't memorized your spreadsheet, but every time I look at it, I'm overwhelmed in a good way by it. But there is such level of detail of data that they can now pull out that has tremendously elevated those regrouping meetings and the sophistication of conversation that they're able to have about students, to dig into things that you're asking about tonight. And Rhonda would like to add, do you mind, Jamie? She's popped in.
Okay, come on, girl.
Well, so the thing that I don't want you to forget when you're looking at student groups is that the reason for this outcome is steeped in instructional practice. So when we're talking about student groups and when you're talking about MTSS, there are reasons for the outcomes that we're seeing. And so I heard last time when Cheyenne was here, a reference to the lack of curricular alignment and consistency. And so there hasn't been a lot of ability to have shared conversations about the rigor and expectation that we are holding all students to. So with the strategic plan making that a priority and having resources that are explicit instruction and lots of opportunities for practice and aligned scheduling to give those students that extra time that they're going to need and the extra instruction, this will change, and it's already starting to change, and we only barely scratched the surface this year. So I just don't want you to get too in the weeds with thinking about the student groups without thinking about the actual students. And it's the instruction that's going to make all of the difference. So that was just, that's
Kind of where my comment was going was, are you, have you started having conversations about what kind of instruction, what kind of learning our teachers need so that we can work with these groups to help them become more proficient? And I, you know?
Yes.
Curious. And I know that again is a multi-year process. It doesn't, you don't just snap your fingers and everything's fixed.
We've got to address tier one first, yeah. We have to address that, that tier one before we can start digging into, okay, tier one's not successful for whatever student groups, whatever percentage, so now what? And the problem is, we've been working kind of the other way through our triangle, and we've been trying to fix up here. And in reality, we didn't have that solid foundation. For whatever reason, it doesn't matter, it's where we're at right now. But we're putting a lot of work in to get that solid foundation. And we, we were lucky enough to be able to start that this year with UFLY and just putting some things in place, even though we pushed off one more year of, of looking to bringing in adoption forward.
And now you'll need to gather that data from the first year of implementation, right? To see, does that automatically then, you know, help those groups? If it does not, then, then you can take those next steps.
And, and we always know with any new implementation of anything, it's gonna take us a little while to get the groove. We've had teachers that have been asked to kind of just fill in and, and come up with things, and now we have that stable curriculum. And the other thing is changing our own expectations for what students should be able to do. When you don't have all of the resources that you need, you're doing the best you can, and that's what you know. When we're able to go with this research-based curriculum, it's kind of saying, yeah, third graders should be able to do this. And it can't be they can't, it has to be how are we going to get them there? Yes, right now, that may be a challenge for them. That may be something that we don't see in our students currently. However, we're gonna have now those resources to get our students there. And the thing I'll note is part of what Dr. Morris talked about with kids coming in and out and things like that, you're not looking at the same number of students in each of those groups. I can tell you our low SES category increased by forty-seven students from fall to spring. So as you look at that, and that's not an excuse, but we also have to keep in, in terms of numbers. Because when they come to us, we don't necessarily know when they, where they've been. And so we don't know where they've come from. And if they don't come from within Iowa, we don't always get records. We don't always know what has been put in place for things like that. Alright, so our next one is always the longitudinal data. And this is what often you guys want to see, what does it look like over time? Again, these are different kids each year. And as you see, you're gonna see jumps in the years because again, we've done a lot of different things over the last ten years in terms of COVID, in terms of switching up which type of tests that we've done. If you see kindergarten from back in twenty twenty to now, we haven't gained, but we haven't lost either. So we're holding steady, and I would suspect that that will just continue to go up now that we have a strong foundational skills in place, and it will be across the entire district. But then you look at our first grade, and from that spring of twenty twenty to now, we've already made a sixteen percent increase. So we should be excited about that, but we can't be happy at seventy-three percent. We've got to look at getting that even higher. Now remember, that's your early reading, so that's the one-on-one test that's looking at those early critical skills. So the next one's gonna take you through that A reading. Look closely at your numbers at the bottom. If you look, you go twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, and then you skip two years. The reason I don't put those in The reason I don't put those in is that if someone accidentally gave a test they weren't supposed to or one kid gets in there, then they make a bar graph on there and it looks, it's very misleading. You have to be very careful to go in and see how many kids actually are in that graph because it will look like, look, a hundred percent of them were proficient and it's really just one kid. So I chose to take those out. And as you look at that, third grades, not a surprise. It's not okay, we're not happy with that. But we also recognize the start of their educational career was a little bit rough with COVID and everything going on. I do suspect with everything that our third grade group has done this year across the district, even though at times it was very frustrating to say, we gotta go back even further, I do suspect over time, we're gonna start to see that increase. Because our second graders, where they're at right now, should move over to that third grade group and we should see that longitudinal data go up.
And I need a quick reminder, you told us in prior presentations, the four colors here are...
So the, the top, the lighter is they call it the college pathway. And that would be that they're proficient, but they're kind of even higher than proficient. And then the next one is that proficiency. Then you're looking at you're kind of at risk and then you're...
Persistent.
Yeah. So really, the number you're seeing, that eighty-two percent in that very first one, is looking at all of those purple colors. We can dig in deeper to see, because part of that is, look at that, that upper bar, that light purple. We need that to grow too. We need to make sure that those students are also growing. We can't just be happy that they're already proficient. And then we will have four, five, six for our longitudinal data. As we look at that, you can see across time. And you can see sixth grade over time is increasing compared to that 2018. Now, seven and eight, if you remember, we just added them in this year for doing FAST. So I don't have that longitudinal data to give you yet because it skips, because it used to be that they were doing that math testing. We decided to go K eight, so we did have that data across the board. Do you wanna do the highlights? You might as well, it's all, most of it's you.
So one thing about the, looking at the benchmarks, when you're looking at the light purple, also the norms are such and the benchmarks are such that if they're on that college pathway, their risk in the future is predicted to be less. Because when they're in the eighty-fifth percentile and higher, that generally means if they're okay in that area, they're going to continue to be okay. So yes, we definitely want that to be where most kids live. So looking at highlights, we have a lot. And I know sometimes the numbers are slow to kind of come around. And I wanna say, I know none of us up here are satisfied with the work we did, but we are very proud of the work we did and the foundation we set this year. So first of all, having the committee come to consensus to recommend the Amplify CKLA is huge. To have UFLY foundations at three sites and have the classroom teachers have such a positive experience, even though they truly received that the week before school. It was freshly out of press and they really had to help develop that as we went. For that to have such, made such a big impact on this, teachers and the students is huge. And then the real bulk of the time has been spent really trying to refine and establish some solid MTSS protocols and procedures in place with systems and teaming and what to do as we get these benchmark assessment data points back in and what are our next steps from there? So that's been a big lift. The data collection tools, I'm pleased people reference my spreadsheets because I am a big fan of making sure that you use the data in a way that will help move kids forward. So if you don't know how to do that, looking at the FAST reports, I will put it in spreadsheet for you and you will be able to find it in another way. So we also have collaborative problem solving meetings at all the elementary school buildings. And the letters professional development has continued with three volume one cohorts and the first volume two that just had their first live training last week.
I'm gonna add to that. It was very interesting today, we were interviewing and we had one of our candidates reference the letters that she had seen through our newsletters and everything like that as she was researching our district all of the time that we've been putting into letters. And it was just neat to see that even outside people are recognizing the commitment that our district and you guys have, have put in to allow us to, to give that training to our teachers. So it was, it was very neat when she referenced and asked, will I be able to be a part of that? Is that gonna be continuing? That people are recognizing the work that's being done and, and how you guys as a board are supporting us moving that work forward.
But Jamie, that goes back to you both and the way that you have chosen to implement that letters by inviting students, or teachers, sorry, by inviting teachers, right? And having them advertise for you, right? Instead of saying, everybody's gonna do this, right?
And you're gonna like it.
And you're gonna like it, right?
I tried that and it never works.
This is, right, it doesn't work. And so that is, that is a huge aid for, I mean, that's big for our district. You have teachers who are asking to take professional development, especially such intense.
Well, the teachers are very reflective and appreciative of that choice. And even the ones who now have waited for whatever reason are saying, when is the next one? Because as they see the impact on their peer, on their peer teachers' classrooms and with kids, they want to do it. So even some that may have waited for a while are now starting to ask. So I think that's also a really good sign. Something that's really exciting, that doesn't get enough credit, is the preschool improvements that have been, been hard at work with Jocelyn Kaidas, their overseeing instructional coach and the team of six that we have now. They went through early childhood letters training. They have been doing SDI training and they've made a lot of instructional improvements and adjustments based on those two things. So data was shared at a meeting we just had and it was really, really promising because we know early intervention and prevention is where we can really make the biggest difference. And that starts with our preschool friends in our system here. So that's really exciting. So thanks to Karen for supporting that work as well. The letters spelling screener was referenced earlier. That is a huge thing for teachers to be able to make a lot of instructional decisions based on it. And then something that's really exciting that I didn't think was gonna happen yet this year was I got to do a lot of inroads with high school and middle school. And so they did some training on assessment data and I was kind of able to be a fly on the wall to see what they were thinking, where they were going with that. And then BMS and VHS requested a vertical alignment meeting about shared writing goals. So that's, I know!
Director Castor, I wanted to share it earlier, but I...
Twenty-three years I've been asking for this.
They asked for it, Paul.
I know.
You're welcome.
Yes, yes, it's very exciting. And so that meeting was really beneficial. And then I was able to sit with middle school at the work of the SAMH and listening to their questions. I was a note taker, so I got to listen to their reflections and take the notes. And a lot of the questions surrounded, what are the evidence-based practices that we're supposed to be doing? Or what are the resources that we need? Or if these numbers aren't where they're supposed to be, what should we do next? And so then I was thinking, we've got a plan for you. So that's going to be next year. A bulk of the work is working with middle school with that professional development and planning that. The beauty of Aspire is it's all asynchronous, but there still is application into classroom that is involved in all of them. And it's more of a, I can design pathways for the different teachers depending on their needs. So if you're an interventionist, you may take different courses than someone who's teaching honors English or general English or that. So that's really exciting for me because I can really tailor that learning and then they can work within PLCs to really solidify that together. And then finally, we had a really great end-of-year data reflective meeting with the instructional coaches and the building administrators together so that we could kind of all look at the data together and start thinking about the glows and grows and what do we have to celebrate and what are we working towards next year? So that is the highlights and then there's more.
You wanna do the next one?
Yeah, sure.
You go, girl.
All right. Future work, referenced it a little bit, but making sure that our strategic plan alignment and goal setting continues because that's a five-year plan. I know that was a thought of, how, why can't we get there next year with some of the differentiation and things? And that's because learning to read is quite nuanced and so it will take more than just one year. But we will have things in place, it just will be a continued effort. The implementation design is happening now. I'm working with teams of teachers and Jamie and we're bringing them in in the summer to look over the scopes and sequences, to ask, answer questions, to get that scheduling piece in place and look at assessments and really make sure it's ready to go for kids.
And I wanna add to that, we open that up to all teachers at the grade level. So these are not just the teachers that sat on the adoption committee because we thought it was important. We couldn't have everyone on the adoption committee, that's just too many people. But when it comes down to bringing in these grade levels, we wanted to open that up. And it was very exciting how many who hadn't necessarily gone through all of that work wanted to come in and start digging into that, you know, during the summer when there's a lot going on and were willing to come in for that half day. So I'm very excited that we've got a, a good mixture of teachers to have different lenses as we look at planning this rollout for next year.
And then the next one is very exciting and also slightly panic inducing for teachers. The elusive flexible service delivery model at elementary schools, specifically in K one, that's going to look like extra support for that core instructional time. And that will then give teachers the ability to have smaller groups with the kids that we are showing need that extra help because they're not proficient yet. And so that is really exciting, but every, the questions are, how is this going to work? And it's going to work, it's gonna be great next year. Then the other thing, the building schedules, it all starts with the building schedules. So administrators are working really hard to make sure that the time that we need those extra support staff available will be by having those strong schedules. Responsive use of data has to happen, those regrouping meetings, those mid-cycle checks, all the MTSS work that we know is best practice has to continue. And then using those SAMH results to really make sure we help the building leadership teams develop, define, and align those building goals that you're hearing now for next year as well. And then we are hoping to launch two more letters cohorts in August. And then the middle school and high school will continue, they wanna do more collaboration together. And BMS, oh, and K five is doing SDI literacy PD. So that also is going to really be helpful to students with specialty design instructional needs. So yeah.
What do you have for questions as we look at the letter C side of things? Because we're gonna move into math, but any questions before we move forward with that?
I have a question, just a, just a statement. I think with this new phonics systems, the P word is coming in fine. I'm anxious to see how this will really affect the person's improvements as well. You are too?
I am too.
Yeah, me Rhonda.
I will be excited about it, yes, you got it. I like that you know that song, I don't think it brought up to me as much anymore.
And I think that key is what, what Director Lynch said, it's that ability for the retention piece. And that's what I'm very excited to see. Kindergarten put a lot of time and effort in this year to UFLY and getting that and to see what we have for that retention as we come back in the fall, so.
Well, and fun fact, that eighty-five percent that I was referencing for the upper, you know, that color, that is true for hopefully that summer slide. They're less likely to fall if they are up in that category. Which K one doesn't break it out that way, but I still can look at it that way. And so I'm very, I have, I have hopes for first grade coming in to be solidly proficient, so.
And I, credit needs to go where credit should go. And Rhonda has been critical in, in doing all of this. It's been a joy to walk alongside her and get to brainstorm with her. And we balance each other very well. She's kind of a Mary Poppins, I'm a little bit more of the rainy cloud sometimes. And so it kind of helps to do that.
I thought you were gonna say Nick Van Dyk.
I was not Nick Van Dyk, although maybe, I don't know. There's been a lot of naysides, I, I've been called. But I do wanna make sure that without her and without her leadership, we would never be where we're at right now. So I just wanna make sure that, I always say, she's got a tough job. She has to do all this and try to make me look good at the same time. And those two together can be very challenging, so.
Well, and honestly, I mean, it took her systems and a lot of face time with Dr. Morris to like figure out, can this really get, can this really work? And so without you saying yes, we wouldn't have done much of any of this. So thank you for that as well, so. But I have the best job, I always say. Who wanted the benchmarks? Is that you, the growth?
Yes, look at that. You ask and you receive.
It gets less and less as you go, so.
All right, we are going to move into math and I can see the people in the back glaring, so we're going to try to go a little bit quicker, maybe. Again, we're gonna go back to that early math data as we look at that. That is also given one-to-one, we have our superheroes down below. And we're looking at that accuracy and those basic facts and operations. We had good growth with that. I think attributing to that is part of looking more intentionally at our interventions for students right away and not waiting a couple of years down the line before we decide to intervene with issues that we're seeing. So happy to see that growth, would like to see that continue. Obviously, we're not, you know, seventy-four and eighty-one's great, but we can always go higher and we'll continue to strive for that. So as we move into the next one, we're looking at our AMAP and that is that percent proficient. AMAP is a tough one because it's very hard to really pinpoint what they're struggling on. You don't get an item analysis, you just get a score. And from there, you have to do a lot of diagnostic to really get back to what it is, those math concepts that they're actually struggling with. And so it's what we have right now to use, but the number in itself, that proficiency number, is very hard to wrap around and say, for as linear as math is, that test does not allow us to really see that accurately. And so we have, we've got to reset. I'm gonna, I'm gonna own that. We've got to reset our math. We rolled it out in the hybrid year. And so that in itself was a challenge for teachers. It was a brand-new curriculum. It also was looking at a different way for us to approach math with students that maybe we weren't as comfortable with. And I think with all of that going on, we just need to reboot. And so we're committed to looking at that, to listening to our teachers. I tell them, it's not going away. This is the curriculum that we have. Not always the answer everyone wants to hear, but that's not the issue. It's what do we need to do to support our teachers so they feel more confident in using the resources that we have? So I think some of this is also just that teachers feeling comfortable and feeling supported in the way that they need to. I will own, this last year, we really focused hard on literacy. We really saw that as our biggest gain, something that we needed to reset. And I think sometimes hindsight for me is, you know, that may be why we're seeing a little bit more of a dip than I would like to with our math. So our next slide is going to take you to those student groups. Again, I chose to highlight those same student groups that were targeted for, but any other student groups that you want, I can easily get you that information at any time. And as we look at that, we're, we're holding steady. However, we've got a, we've got a lot of room to grow. And again, students can go across multiple areas in this chart, one student can be. Our next slide, I did not do cohort data for this, I tried. It is absolutely a horrible graph or chart to show you because for a long time, we didn't use AMAP. We used district assessments and then we have COVID, then we went back to doing that. And so to put any longitudinal data together looks like I didn't know what I was doing and just put a whole bunch of bar graphs up there. So I chose not to show you that, but if you're dying to see that graph, I am more than happy to send it to you and you can, you can listen or look at it all you want. Longitudinal data though, across for early math, again, these are different kids each year. So look carefully at the bottom when you're looking at your years across time. Kindergarten, we're holding steady, but look at that first grade. As we started to, to bring in this illustrative math in our new curriculum, we're really starting to see those gains. The critical part is maintaining that as we go across. Again, early math is a totally different assessment than when we switch here to the next slide to our student... next slide to our student groups. Our, yeah, you went the wrong way there, girl. There you go, you were just testing me, weren't you? As we look at this across that time and we look, as we move into that AMAP, again, it's a tough test in order for us to use that data effectively as the score that we're given. What it's showing is that we are struggling to meet what that test is testing and figuring out what that looks like across the board. I want to work with our math team to find a better way to take our actual formative assessments in class, our unit assessments that we're tying directly to the standards and using that data to really drive our intervention groups based on relying solely on AMAP. I think AMAP gives us a, hey, you need to look at these kids, you need to, you know, it highlights that, but I don't think it breaks it down enough for us to make that correlation back to our curriculum or even with our intervention side of things. Bridges has been a tremendous help, but if you remember, we rolled that out mid-year. I worked with the foundation and they were gracious enough to give us that money, but we did roll that out mid-year. That's always hard when you give somebody in the middle of a school year and try to say, use the resources. They did phenomenal with it, but I think now that we've gotten our feet underneath us, we're going to be able to use that even more effectively moving forward. And our next slide, so we have our fourth and our fifth. Fourth is obviously we are making those gains and fifth, we're, we're holding steady. So highlight, as we look at this, our first grade average proficiency is at 81%. That is great, given that that program, so our kindergartners are getting that core program. As we get higher, we have kids who didn't have it and had it, you know, in the middle of their career. Our district proficiency average is at 75%. Obviously, we're not. It's a good number, but we want to increase and go even higher. As I mentioned, bridges as an intervention program has made a huge difference for our teachers. I think it's given them the concept, or the confidence. More importantly, it's given them a resource to go to. Math is hard to come up with a different way to teach the same thing over and over again. And I think at that elementary level, when you're also teaching every other subject, it can be even more challenging. And what we've really committed to this year is getting more of our math intervention groups in to, into the cycles and things like that. Before, we had hit and miss, some buildings were doing math intervention, others were not, and we've been much more intentional with that. So as we look at our future work, as we listen to our teachers, fact fluency is a big worry for them and what that looks like. If you remember when we were in school, it was probably mad minutes, you stood, did around the world, those type of things. We've moved away from those timed tests for kids, but we still need to ensure that they have that fact fluency. One of that is looking at those centers that are built into our program. The irony is, right before COVID, we were doing a lot of work with manipulatives, we were really focused on that for some kids, that's what helps them to grasp that. COVID came along and we said, don't touch, don't share, don't breathe on those things. And we put a lot of them away. And now it's taken us a little bit longer to get those back out and start using those again. So we're going to be much more intentional with that this year and ensuring all kids have access to it. I may not need it, but he may need it and it shouldn't be, oh, you've got to get up and go across the room to get it, so everyone's going to look at you. It should just be there, kind of like having a pencils on your desk type of thing. We talked about scheduling with literacy. We are really going to be more intentional with our scheduling of the elementary math book and helping teachers to see how to use that time and how to ensure that we get the needed components in there. Tier two interventions, how do we intervene right away? So we don't wait till they get to that tier three and maybe have to do pullout. And then we're going to focus a lot of our district grade level work. We're looking at having two different Wednesdays where we're able to focus on that grade level work. One will be around literacy and social studies and the other one will be around math and science. It's great to come together. PLCs are very important, our building PLCs are doing great work, but as a district, as Director Smithson said, we've got to get everybody on that same page and we've got to have those conversations across the board of what's going on and what's working and really learn from each other. And that's what that time period is going to be about. So we started at the beginning with everybody running away or two, but our second slide had our preschool graduation and we end with our class of 2023 graduating. So obviously, we want to take them from PK to graduation. What questions do you have for me for math? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Jamie, thank you, Rhonda. And tell your professor, Rhonda, thank you. We appreciate that she's thrown you from class. I don't know if they mentioned, but Rhonda is actually in her doctoral program right now, so, and continuing to do all this work.
All right, that brings us to 5.04, fiscal year 22 audit.
And I, we do need a motion and I see that in our journey with board docs the other day, that the recommended action got dropped.
So I would say, can I just say I make a motion to approve 5.04, the FY, FY22 audit as presented.
Awesome, thank you.
And I will second it.
Thank you, Richard.
Bob.
Any questions?
Make it away.
No, I appreciate it.
It was good to second it, I thought we were done.
Nice try, Mr. Beckwith.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to help Jamie out a little bit, get it done a little.
I did appreciate it getting emailed the other day to be able to read through it.
So. To get it to you this weekend, but it's been a journey, sorry.
It was plenty of time to get through it.
So I'm going to honorably replicate a presentation that you've seen in the past so that it's familiar to you. So we're going through the same format, I've updated some information based on the 22 audit. I obviously wasn't here then, so in review and then speaking with the auditors, came up with these points to present to you this evening. So the audit, it was good, it was a clean audit again, which is always good news. District remains at a low risk for an auditee based on the federal funds being audited with no deficiencies being found. So we're in a good position. We did have two findings again this year, they're the same findings that you saw last year in the audit. This year, we overstated the certified enrollment by two students, so we've worked with the Department of Ed on correcting that issue. It was a net of two students, by the way, we overstated three and understated one, so it was a net of two. We think we have it corrected. And then the second finding was that the board is a little bit behind in updating policies. However, you've updated 150 again, I think it was actually 152 policies this past year, which puts you over 300 policies in two years. So we'll just continue to bring those back to the board so that we can present them, you guys can approve them and we can get caught up on this so that hopefully we wipe that finding out. In speaking with the auditors today, the finding with the students being overstated or understated, he said is almost a given in any district because of the open enrollment that's afforded to us. So just know that that one's going to be a little bit more difficult to try to take off, but if that's the only one that we have in the future, that would be good news. So this, this chart looks really favorable to the district at this point, and then I'll explain why. The net position in the district actually went up 13.11%, which is outstanding. The reason for that was that the district's unfunded liabilities for retirement with IFRS was decreased by about $6.5 million. The reason for that, they had a 30% return on investment, the market was flying, actually it was 29.8, but I bumped it into 30. It was flying. So I will let you know that next year, the graph will be probably pretty close to where it was in 2021 because their return on investment is to average 7%. And when we looked at it today, it was about negative one. So that, that position will reduce again, or our actual liabilities will increase again in another, for 23, so that chart will be, it's going to be an anomaly in that one year. The economic factors, one thing that we're looking at and continuing to try to change the direction of this, but the enrollment dropped by 27 students again for certified enrollment. The state supplemental aid will have a big impact on how much reserves we would have to use to cover any increased costs. And the SIR funding that we've received, mind you, this was a year ago now, so this is the end of '22, was $3.9 million at the time. That doesn't take into consideration anything that we've spent this year and what we have allocated for next year that we've already approved. So it, as though it seems like there's a lot of money sitting there from COVID relief, it is earmarked and will be utilized this coming year as SIR3 funds go away. We will have expended all of that funding at this time, at that time. That's the presentation. I had, see, Jamie, how you do that, you put five slides together. You up here, you speak, you ask questions, they say no, and you move on. I'm teaching her as we go, so I will help her through it.
Thank you.
You're all right.
Bob, I don't know what to do.
Why, I heard you guys aren't allowed to sit in the.
I wasn't going to ask any, but now I'm going to ask about students.
I would be happy to try to answer any questions that I can.
On page 17, on live. Actually, you may not be able to answer this because you've just joined us so recently.
Oh, no, I'm all.
But Rhonda would be able to ask, answer it however, so step up your game. In past audits, one of the concerns they have had is sales tax getting paid in the process of reimbursement. They did not mention that at all as a problem. In fact, they noted that they sell no instances. Does that mean we fixed our reimbursement process, so we're catching that? Or did they just not pick the right receipts?
Sales tax the district has paid?
Typically, typically it's because, you know, someone's gone, they've had travel, you're in, you're in a restaurant and you can't say, well, I'm on state business, don't tax me. You pay the restaurant tax and you bring back your receipts to give reimbursement.
Without sales tax reimbursement. I'm assuming that we've made strides in catching those things as we process, process payments. I know there, I review the bills every time there's a board run, colleague, and I've seen one and she corrected it. So we made the adjustment on the, on the receipt. It wasn't allowable, it was a, it was a not allowable expense.
And so I was actually pleased and I was expecting to see that and was pleased that I didn't read it in this year's audit.
Well, we will continue to make sure that happens. Any other questions?
Great, roll call. Go, yes. Director Easton?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Chupin?
Yes.
Director Dorder? Motion carried by 02.
Excellent, that brings us to 5.05, welcome back Bob for the May financials, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve 5.05, May financials.
Great, a second please.
Second, second, second.
Excellent, welcome back, Bob.
Real quick, just to point out a couple of areas for the public that may not have the synopsis that I provided to the board. The general fund, the revenues are three tenths of a percent higher than they were at this time last year. And the expenses are six tenths of a percent lower. So we're not in one difference, right? But when you look at $60 million, 1% ends up being a little bit of money. So we're going to continue that trend, hopefully in the future, that we're going to be right on track with what we presented to you for budgets. And then the overall cash position was up 3.4% from the prior year. We'll see that adjust a little bit again in June because of the third payroll. We've only had 25 of the 26 pays, so that cash position adjusts slightly due to that extra payroll this month, which is on the 13th.
Any questions pertaining to the May financials for Bob?
Are you planning on bringing June financials or are we going to hold off to?
We were, I, I haven't, I haven't talked to Dr. Morse about it. Historically, in previous districts, I've not brought June financials because they're not audited.
That's been our practice too.
And, and I didn't know, so that was a question I was going to ask if, we'll hold off on those until, I'm glad that we didn't hold them until the audit was completed and presented because you wouldn't have seen any for 12 months. But we can hold those off and bring them as historically they've been brought to you as a, to review.
Great, roll call.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director Pivich? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Chupin?
Yes.
Director Dorder? Director Easton?
Yes.
Motion carried by 02.
Thank you, that brings us to 5.06, approval for the transfer of the general funds from Fund Revolution, I cannot read.
I will make a motion to approve 5.06, approve the transfer from general fund activities fund to support safety equipment up to $20,000 annual approval and allocation.
Sorry, it's contagious. Second please.
Second.
Okay, and who would like to read that resolution?
You want me, director, is that what, oh, just the resolution portion. Whereas Iowa Code provides school district greater flexibility to transfer excess funds to other specified purposes. Whereas the board, in consultation with its community, has determined that funds of $20,000 in the general fund shall be transferred to the student activity fund to purchase protective and safety equipment required for any extracurricular, inter-scholastic athletic contest or competition that is sponsored or administered by an organization as currently defined by Iowa Code. Now, therefore, I actually don't need to read that.
You got your first one, Jamie. We sure did. So I know Director Lynch had a great question, I haven't had a chance today to get back to him. When I looked at last year's resolution and kind of that financial spreadsheet, thanks, scholastic, you'll go down. Last year, it focused on BHS football and middle school helmet reconditioning, like where they put it at the bottom, and wrestling. This year, I know there was, they indicated weight room on there and you also, through the Pebble budget, identified an amount of $15,000. I believe this was when Diane, and I will butcher her last name, Director Castor Lichtenberg?
Lichtenberg.
Lichtenberg, thank you, had retired, that there was this additional $15,000 to help keep up with the cardio equipment in, in that room. So bottom line, this year, that you can clearly see activities put out almost $35,000, the resolution is for 20. They just identified some pieces in terms of the nine and 11,000. At the end of the day, they could have picked another combination, they are asking for the reimbursement of the $20,000. But it is predominantly, this money, as I understand it from our activities athletic director, is predominantly used to help ensure those helmets and the other equipment, that's safety equipment, is reconditioned and in appropriate working order to protect our athletes. So I just wanted to, I did dig in with Bob around that, so I just didn't have a chance to call you today.
Which is fine, and this 20,000 is in addition to that 15,000 cardio equipment?
And so this 20,000, from my understanding, has been with the focus on safety, right? Making sure things are safe. And I do believe Matt Sebold had come earlier this year to talk about how some of our weight room equipment had gone past its lifespan and was not safe, some of the racks and the bars. And so they really, he ran some pretty successful fundraising attempts, raised quite a bit of money to help offset new weights and racks and bars. And then obviously, they spent some additional money out of their activity accounts. And then the football helmet reconditioning, et cetera. Last year, I know we had to purchase wrestling mats because they, for whatever reason, did not make it as long as we had hoped with the wear and tear and they had become unsafe for students, you couldn't really properly clean them any longer. And so when we dug into that, that's what we found. But that other line item you're referring to for the cardio equipment replacement, which then affords that gently-used equipment from the high. which then affords that gently-used equipment from the high school to go to the middle school fitness room, my understanding is that is a line item in the Pebble budget. That's where that was placed, for it makes sense.
Any other questions? Roll call. I hope I've clarified.
Director Pivich? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Dorder? Director Eastman?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carried by zero two.
Thank you, that brings us to 5.07, the approval of curriculum instruction and assessment coordinator. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve 5.07, approve the job description that's presented for the curriculum instruction and assessment coordinator.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Director Morris?
As we've been having ongoing conversations probably for the last two years, especially within this last year, in not backfilling our associate superintendent position, we've got some work to do in the central office to provide the support and relief that we need, especially in the areas of curriculum instruction and student services. So in our first effort to try to alleviate the 80-hour work weeks and to make sure that all the work that you've seen tonight is able to continue to be moved forward. And we support our building leaders who desperately need support from the central office. Our goal at central office is to provide those supports and services to our building leaders so they can be available to staff and in classrooms, leading the instructional side of the work. And so if that is getting them the data they need, if that is ensuring from the H R side they've got adequate coverage when teachers are out due to illness or family illness, those, we look at our job as providing those supports and services more in the managerial side, so they can lead the instructional work that needs to be led. And so we present to you tonight a entry level kind of administrative position. And the other piece that this creates in our district is starting to look long-term at succession planning, so that we can build leaders within the system and give them opportunities so they don't have to go out to have to come back in for leadership opportunities.
Any questions?
Any questions? I just want to say it's very clear tonight, the amount of work Jamie and her team has been getting done, and even under her own admissions, there's clearly some need for support for her position, and that doesn't include her A E R work weeks, so that there's somebody here to help with, you know, the other, like the math, the curriculum. So there's a lot of work getting done. This is, I always look at administrative positions with a little more acuity, but this is an important job. It's placing somebody in a position that supports every building within this district. And when you split it among the buildings, it's a very important position. And I just want to note that we have not filled positions up here at this administrative office. In fact, we've restructured several times to leave positions up here. This is an investment in the work that has gone on in this district for two years. And for the six years on the board, it's what we've been demanding as far as aligning this district, and it's finally happening. And I just think it's very important that we support that mission, continue the progress at this point.
Thank you, could not have said it better myself.
Can I sort of echo that a little bit and stress that one person cannot adequately, you know, both of these positions really support our teachers, giving them the instructions, the instruction that they need, the learning that they need, the support that they need, and one person is not capable to do that to all of our buildings all at the same time. There has to be another person in order to truly give our teachers the support and the learning that they need.
Thank you, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, just a few clarification questions. Don't we already have a person who's the executive director of curriculum instruction and assessment? Is that right, is that Jamie?
James.
Yeah. Okay, so then we're going to have two?
No, that's who they report to. So this individual will be a coordinator.
Yeah, so
The job title.
So job title and that reports to?
So Jamie is now the executive director of curriculum instruction and assessment then? Or no?
Yes.
So we've, is that a different position we are proving, or no?
We, where's Mr. Beckwith? So at our last time together, he presented to the board the need to look at some restructuring in the central office. I'm going to let you take it away. I do not want to put words in your mouth.
No, that's okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We presented something to the board the last time with regards to our organizational structure.
Was that June 13th?
Yes, yes.
I was not here for that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So that, that meeting, I presented something to the board members that were present, that we currently had a structure that we had individuals, try to put this politically correct, individuals that were compensated at a much greater rate, that were at positions that are not the executive cabinet. So we had directors of curriculum, directors of student services, human resources, finance. I excluded myself from that, because we'd already discussed mine, that were making considerable, considerably less money than principals and assistant principals, basically in their first and second years of their positions at that level. So I presented something that would be somewhat of, as Dr. Morse mentioned, a succession plan for individuals to come in, move up the organization, and then fill positions as other individuals leave. So we would have a superintendent, you would have four executive directors, which are your current directors of curriculum, finance, H R, student services. And then you would have groups underneath that, because there was really no structure that I could see to an org chart, an organizational chart. So if I had to report to someone, it was really not clear the delineation between the groups. So I presented that. We adjusted compensation appropriately based on regionally competitive school districts, presented it, and it was passed. This is a position that would report directly to the executive director for curriculum.
Okay, so
And what we'll, the other problem we had, if I was a principal, there's no reason for me to move up the chain and hierarchy chart, because I'd make less money. I mean, really, that's really what a lot of it boiled down to. Why would I leave my position as a principal, even though I may want a curriculum position or a student services position, or move into a superintendency, or H R, finance? But I'd have to take a pay cut to do that. So we adjusted those appropriately.
So then do we have to create a new board policy then? Because under policy 303, there's not a position called the executive director of curriculum and assessment and instruction. So do we have to put in that, under board policies now, or no?
So the action that the board took that night was part of that reclassification around compensation was just the title change. We haven't fundamentally changed the job duties yet. One of the series of board policies that we need to get through are the ones, the twos, and the three hundreds. And so I think it will be more beneficial to bring all of those, have all of our administrators relook at their job descriptions and update those all at once with an updated org chart to bring that back at a later date. We haven't changed the, the board approved the changing of the job title and the salary structure that evening, as what Mr. Beckwith proposed.
So that was in that closed session that night, is that right?
Correct, and out of closed session, because you can't take action in closed session.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so basically, we, I just want to clarify, we changed the job title that night, but we did not change the job duties that evening. And then this person then reports to, to the director of curriculum and instruction, and that, that change has already been made, that title change has already been passed.
Correct.
So with this new position, just for clarification, I wasn't here, so then does the executive director of curriculum instruction now have a different job description and different duties?
No.
No.
I just clarified that, that we changed only the title. We did not change any job descriptions or duties.
Essentially by anyone.
And Dr. Moore, Paul, and I'm trying to, Dr. Morse said that we need to get through those job descriptions, and that's a goal of hers, to have everybody look at their job description and give the organization a structure.
Correct, but I want to bring back as to what Mr. Beckwith said is, you had positions who are giving direction to building principals that sat flat on an org chart and made significantly less than the people they were having to direct work to. And so the job duties in the director of curriculum and now the executive director of curriculum instruction and assessment are substantial enough for what they're doing. Job descriptions are, you know, are supposed to be just kind of a guidepost to what is done, but as Jamie always jokes with me, it's always the very last item, perform other duties as assigned. And when you think through the magnitude of curriculum instruction and student services and the level of the amount underneath those positions, I mean, as we had the associate superintendent position and the two directors under them, there was plenty of work and still then some that needed to be accomplished with all the requirements from the state, the assessment, the accountability pieces, the curriculum, leading curriculum committees, implementation of curriculum, selecting curriculum, I could go on and on. And then you have the old assessment side, all of the state reporting, as Karen Allison can attest right now, on the end of the year assessment, or in ARPESCA, all of the end of the year required reporting elements that our state requires of us. So we've not changed the job description, except the board gave approval to Mr. Beckwith's proposal to restructure compensation and title of those positions.
Yeah, just one other question on the new positions. The first one, A, says master degree required, so it doesn't have to mean anything educationally then? Because before it was an M A in educational leadership or curriculum and instruction, so one of the requirements now is just a master's degree?
What, before, this is a brand-new position?
No, I mean, I mean, the old position said
What old position?
There wasn't, it was an old position.
Are you talking about the director, the person that supervises this person? Yeah, that would be appropriate. And setting our sort of requirements broader makes sense. So we expect you to have a master's degree, but we're not going to specify what in. Find the right person that got
Hopefully, it's an educational kind of
Well, they have to have five to seven years of teaching, they are a teacher. So there is an educational requirement. Read the whole list and it will explain it.
You don't want to make it so narrow that you can't actually find anyone to meet your needs in a lot of cases.
They're also an instructional coach. I mean, they're definitely already on the way to being a leader. Whoever fills this position already has that. And it also says working towards or obtained administrative degree preferred, which, right there adds in that extra level. So they already have to have a master's. If it's not in administration, then they, we want someone who is, we're not going to require it, but probably working towards that. But they've already done instructional coaching, they've done five to seven years of teaching, they already have a master's degree, so learning above, you know, just a teacher who is out of, you know, out of a bachelor's program that's taught for five years. This is already a person who is working towards and has those skills.
The other piece nowadays, because of all the alternative pathways to come into education, you could very well have someone that came in through a business lens with an M B A, but they're not going to go back and get a master, another master's, but they have their teaching certification, because we brought them on through the career, the C T E pathway, right? Because we've got the Rappel program, and then there's some other alternative certification processes that you can come into the educational arena now, especially in the C T E fields.
Since I missed, I just kind of had some of those questions.
Appreciate it, thank you.
No, and it's evident that the team that we have in place, Jamie Olson, Miley Mahia, I'm sure Dr. Morris, thought this out very clearly and put it together very strategically. So I appreciate the time spent on it. Any other questions? Great, roll call.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Dorder? Director Eastman?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director Pivich? Motion carried by zero two.
Excellent, thank you. That brings us to 5.08, review of the 2023 Iowa legislative priorities. So tonight is simply just starting an initial conversation. I anticipate we'll have a further conversation in July. If we get to the point where you guys have finalized what you want the priorities to be, great. If not, we will have the first meeting in August to wrap that up before I A S B. Their preferred deadline is the middle of August, but you can turn it in later. I have included for you this evening what I A S B is reporting as some of their proposed legislative resolutions or priorities going into the 23, 24 school year, as well as what hours were last year. And so I want to just hear your thoughts and where you'd like our team to kind of take us.
I appreciate posting those I A S B ones. I'm honest with you, when I go through them, I'm not sure what good it's going to do with what the state's been doing, and I'm going to leave my comment on that before I see something I should have.
I would actually, in thinking about what could be useful for I A S B, we benefited from one of the grants that enabled us to place a therapy classroom in the school. And one of the frustrations that Dr. Morse has voiced to us is that it's a competitive grant process, and all of the school districts that didn't get funded had, I'm confident, good and solid proposals, and that maybe we should suggest a resolution about supporting the therapy classrooms and making it not competitive, so that every district is able to access funds to do that. I mean, because frankly, I agree with you, we don't need to say that S S A matters, because everybody already knows that.
And they don't care.
And that would be something that could be useful to guide I A S B when they're talking with legislators about what's possible and wise.
Can I, can I just ask a question really quickly? Was there any conversation about one of the priorities being, asking the B O E E to make sure that they develop new guidance when new laws are put into place?
What are you talking about?
The new, the new, on the, the education bill that ended the session. The B O E E has been asked for guidance and has said it will not give any.
And that you're to seek your own legal
And that we are to seek our own legal counsel.
Well, they just got a new director again, so
Well, that's the D E, not the
Oh, you're right.
But the B O E is going to get swallowed by the D E.
Right.
Just try to get the consolidation.
So one of the things that, I mean, I think maybe the I A S B should put towards, you know, the legislators is that if they're going to create laws that directly impact us, right, then they have to be able to have
Guidance for those laws?
Guidance and clarification. They can't just say, seek, I mean, seek legal counsel, because
No, I would like to ask
If there's not an interpretation of the law by the B O E, then how do we know where that goes?
What you're saying makes sense to me, and I think it's also completely consistent sort of in terms of the level of specificity. It's not broad, grand principles, it's particular things that will be of assistance.
Right, right.
That we could think about having two resolution suggestions to send forward. And it would be better if we could do that in July rather than August, so that you might actually get some traction when the L R C meets sometime in August to talk about what's come forward, what we want to do.
And I would imagine the reason they put the August 12 deadline is the L R C probably meets shortly after that. And I do believe we have an August 8 for me. I'm happy to wrap this up in July, trust, trust me, but if we should need extra time. So I just, I want to make sure, that's why I started tonight, especially with everybody's different vacation schedules that are getting ready to happen over the next month, right? I want to understand, Director Smithson, what, so we can work to draft some language to propose to you in July?
We're happy to work with you outside of this as you think.
Yeah, maybe we could work, let me.
Yeah.
Let me, yeah, I want to process that, and I want to get some input from, because it particularly impacts the library programs, right? And that happens to be something that I'm working on right now. So I can also get some direct, you know, say, what are we looking for? What type of language would help to create what it is that we're saying, hey, you passed a law, but we need guidance on how to put that into place. There are lots of districts who are going to be looking at, you know, the new, this new law that has come down and think, how do we implement this, or what, how does that impact us, right? All of the school boards around here are going to be doing that. We need some kind of guidance so that we can make sure that our policies then align with those. So let me work, I can reach out to a couple of people. But I know that that has been, you know, something that's been very sort of like frustrating from the lens of, you know, I mean, we don't get, like, there's a new law, but we don't have guidance on it. So how, how is that going to impact us as a board? What do we need to do for our policies, that kind of thing? And it goes down to individual teachers, and it's about protecting our teachers as well. We need to make sure that our policies are able to protect our teachers, right? But we need that guidance. So let me, I'll work on that and we can work on that outside.
And, and to your point, as a group of, as our superintendent group for our AEA, we had similar conversation around, this was before. They had let us know that they probably wouldn't be giving us guidance because typically they give us the legislations fast, they make the rules, right? Like, they help us with that. But we also, as a group, wanted to make sure we were all consistent in those policies and practices from one district to the next so that we can be supportive of each other, but also make sure we can avoid some controversy. So I'm hearing that piece around mental health or social, emotional, behavioral health, and how do we shift from a system of competitive grants to one that develops a funding formula so all students in districts across our state could have an opportunity to access? Access funds, sorry. And then we'll continue to work through this omnibus bill and maybe what could we propose for support around that arena? So I'm hearing those two so far, correct? What else are you guys thinking you would like to be an area of focus in terms of our legislative priorities?
Personally, I just need to think about it for a little bit.
Yeah, no, and that's why I appreciate you bringing this to us this early on. And that way, Dr. Pivich and Director Dorder have the opportunity to bring forward any.
I think CTE funding should be a priority. The state keeps talking about it being a priority, and I haven't really seen.
Additional funding.
They've done some grants, like some state funding, but it'd be nice for them to approve some staffing for that.
Agreed. I know, Director Lynch, you and I have had some conversation off and on around the at-risk and the equalization of that and some focus on additional at-risk funding as well. Is that something you would like us to try to work on some language around too? Is that something that came out of this, you know, what was the talk when you were there?
That was just thinking about some of the conversations at the LRC meeting. I don't know that, like, really, as in all cases, we really only know about three things. Get more than that, and it's going to get too muddy. And it sounds like we've identified three things that speak correctly to our district. If you think at-risk is more important than SEBH, then I'd go that direction. But I think for where we are, SEBH is.
Okay, perfect. All right, so.
That's helpful to get us started.
And as you all are processing, thinking through this, reading this, talking with colleagues and other, you know, community members, if you have other thoughts or specific things within those three banks right now that we just talked about today, please reach out and let me know so we can draft some proposed language that we can look at again in July. And then if it's good, great. If not, we'll bring it back at the first meeting in August so we get it right for what we want our district's priorities to be.
Right.
Just one other note on that. There was a resolution last year in opposition to PSAs, voucher educational savings accounts for private schools, obviously.
It not.
That has happened. So I'm guessing, if anything, it will be, here are some things that need to be fixed. Along these lines, if we need guidance, how is the money flowing? How is, like, closing some loopholes? Because it seems like there's some pretty big ones right now.
And I'm going to guess the guidance will be the same given the journey. So I should not comment on what the state's doing. Anything else you'd like to share? All right, we will move on to 6.01, upcoming calendar items. Thank you, Celeste.
I want to note, as we're looking ahead, that because you were absent, I got to have the final motion of the meeting.
For the first time ever. I told them not to get comfortable with it, though.
You should not.
No, I just did a call I wanted to.
And we're not a journey yet, so don't get, don't get excited.
I will make a motion for 7.01, motion to enter into closed session. Motion to enter into closed session pursuant to IOCO Chapter 21.5, Sub 1, Sub C, which allows for closed session, discuss strategy of counsel in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the government body in that litigation.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Dorder? Director Eastman?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director Pivich?